Good evening. We, uh, call our wet session to order for July eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Got no guest speaker, we're gonna, gonna old business, which review the changes to the county comprehensive plan, and review the proposed changes to the county land use map, review the zoning map change for proposed rural agriculture zone, and review the expansion of the county overlay district, and review the change in the requirements in the overlay district.
If y'all would like to make a motion to go to the new business first, that way we have plenty of time to discuss women in unity.
Alright, can I give him a motion?
I make a motion.
Second it.
Motion is second that we go to, uh, down to new business, all in favor, right hand, poses, I have it. So we'll go down to our new business, which is, uh, review the proposed women, woman in unity facility be located at corner Crest Road and Wells Road. Type's map one, three, seven, double out, double out, zero, two, one, triple out. So we have, uh.
Mr. Eppen, if you guys have any questions, um, women in unity is a nonprofit entity. Um, as you can see, they will be located on the corner of Crest and, or Wood.
Wells Road.
I'm sorry. Uh, corner of Crest and Wells. And if you would like, uh, Mr. Brown to speak, to kind of give you an idea of what they do in Rachel County, if you'd like to call on me.
Okay, Brown, is it Brown? Yes, sir, come on up, uh.
Do we have a? We have.
It's in, it's in there.
Okay.
It's in.
Can you share with us one of these, Nifferson along with me?
No problem, come on up.
Good evening.
Yeah.
Um, just wanna just share a little bit about women in unity. Um, um, Ms. Nifferson, it's Nifferson founded it twenty-two years ago. And she has been working with our community with after-school program. In that program, she also established a food pantry, which has now served, um, half a million pounds of food from golden harvest and local constituents, fruit line in, and other, um, constituent of the community, um, to our, to our residents. Um, we serve thirty-six kids, uh, uh, a day, five days a week, from two o'clock to six o'clock. After-school assistance, tutoring, and we also serve them a full, complete meal, along with a full, complete snack. Um, we also give them, um, weekly, um, boxes to go home, so that they can help accommodate their family, because we serve a underprivileged community. Um, we've outgrown, this is our second site. Uh, first, uh, first site was Glover Street, which was donated by Ms. Nicholson's sister, um, the late, kind of, um, Bowman. She donated that site, we outgrown that site, moved to the Three PKM Park about seven years ago. We like grown that site. Um, and over the years, we've kind of become makeshift environment, so therefore, um, we solicited, um, land for growth, so that we, we can accommodate the parking, the people coming in and out. Um, as of on Monday, we will be doing a distribution where we will serve nearly three hundred people in that distribution, right on Three PKM Park. Um, that is a working in community, because there are other entities there that we kind of take up their space. But we have a partnership agreement that they allow us to do so, because of what we do. And so, we are here tonight just to ask for the city, they can, find it in their hearts to allow us to do what we need to do, because we are taking care of entry account, and I'm never in the community. Um, for the last four or five years, we have also housed the DSS, uh, senior market voucher. Uh, like this year, we didn't do it because of the fact that we didn't have the space to accommodate. So therefore, we afforded it, um, Pleasant Grove Baptist Church took on that task because of such. But in the last five years, we have been doing that. Um, and the numbers have gone up. We've increased the numbers in doing the, uh, vouchers. When we started the vouchers, we were only receiving two hundred. Now we are at, I think, six hundred. We are now rece- receiving six hundred fifty-dollar vouchers, fresh fruit vouchers, that we can have our community go to Christine's, um, on Main, and as well as Sarah's, and other local marketers that serve fresh fruit and get free food and free vegetables. That's part of what we've done. Um, but of course, back to where our original, we, we outgrown our space. We've outgrown, um, the space for our children. We only limited at the number of space that we have for our children to play. Um, and that is one of the main components with Department of Social Services, the ABC voucher is purpose-for-play environment. And we did not have one. And we do not have an adequate, um, purpose-for-play environment. So, we're here to solicit from the city, from the county, thank you.
Any question, come in, anybody? Uh.
We serve only elementary right now. Um, when the new facility, because the facility is gonna accommodate, that we can expand into our middle school. Right now, we only can serve elementary, due to the fact, we cannot have them in the same environment. They have to be separate. But with the new facility, we'll be able to sa- serve K through five, and as well as solicit from the state for middle school.
What will the total number be that y'all will be able to serve in the new facility?
Seventy-five.
Mr. Chairman, in the site plan that you have, which we'll get up and donate one, they will be having a playground located onsite. So I, I don't think that shows that, that it shows the driveway, parking, and ability, so they will have a visiting area for the children to have outdoor play.
I think there's a plot, it's in the acres, and in, in the little description, it says thirteen acres, which is the.
I'm assuming that's the, that's what they're going to develop. Part of this property is in the town, and the part that they're gonna develop is in the county, is the eight acres. The remainder will be in the town, if they're gonna develop the parts in, in the county, the eight acres.
I was wondering, I thought I was confused, cause I said on here, a problem went to the acre. But I see, I know that the town is splitting through there, we'll come back in, cause I know town doesn't come our way out to the highway out there. But, uh, the driveway is gonna be coming in from the city, then in the county. That, that building, that gonna be, uh, Melville building?
Yes, sir.
Melville.
We have our contract in here, you can.
Oh, that, that gonna be your contract in?
It's a touring job.
And this is in your package also.
So, uh, let's see here, something to add.
Is your structure able to be added on to, kind of like, you know, the jail, not the jail, the dog thing? How we can add on to that metal building? Can it be added on to adequately, to increase size if you should need it?
Yes, yes, it can be. Hopefully, we don't eat, we don't eat, hopefully, we can accommodate everybody, unless we get a hundred thousand kids, that's a lot of kids, still can get in that building.
Lord help you.
I don't think it's just the capacity for all of those.
Are you, are you, are you volunteer?
We only have, we, we have two, um, employees, and we have six volunteers.
Okay, you said with the seventy-five, that's gonna be seventy-fives for the students?
Yes.
So that's the combination of elementary and middle?
Well, we can accommodate seventy-five with middle, but we have to apply for the state for the middle school, um, clearance.
So right now, this seventy-five is going towards the elementary?
We probably won't get seventy-five, cause we only have five, we have five working, we have five tech, technology classes. And each one of those classes, we'll probably accommodate roughly about ten people, ten kids, and with one and a half staff. They sign up, they can sign up, or they can be recommended through DSS. Most of our kids right now are recommended through DSS. Uh, ninety, ninety percent of our kids are under DSS recommendation.
Now, how do the children get to your facility after school? Does the school bus bring them there?
School bus transport them from W. Parker to the site.
Is that the only elementary school that?
That is the only elementary. We, we tried to utilize Douglas, because we've had parents call for that. But, uh, transportation, entry kind of, um, school board transportation would not allow it, unless there's a special case need with kids that are being served special needs, um, that was the only option.
And how the children get home to the parents?
Parents pick them up.
Do you have, um, additional capabilities for special needs children?
Our, our facility accommodates, um, all special needs, if, if in that, in fact, we have, um, cases where need wheelchair accessibility. Right now, facility does that, um, and the new facility will be able to accommodate those.
So if the parents want their children to come to you all from Johnson, um, Johnson Elementary or Douglas, they would have to provide the, um, transportation there and from, right?
Currently, you know, we, we've been trying to convince the school board to give us, you know, plans with trying to get transportation, because we've had a lot of parents who we've had to turn down because of the fact. Um, and especially when it's underserved, most of the parents that need the services don't have transportation.
Is that something that y'all could do, to provide the transportation for them?
We could provide transportation. Right now, we have, we have a bus, and a SUV, and a truck. Um, but, of course, you know, we only have two and a half staff, um, members, and the rest are volunteers. So, right now, we, our volunteers are not allowed to transport anybody or utilizing them on our vehicles. So, um, you know, that would be a kind of catchy, it's kind of catchy. Now, we've been asked about that. Um, transportation is seeming to be an issue right now. You know, trying to get someone to staff a person just to drive to deliver the kids, take them back and forth, you know? That is a big issue. But most of our parents, they understand that, and there's a carpooling, we try to carpool them if they can. We have some parents that live in the same neighborhood, we try to connect them with those parents and say, you know, you know, you can carpool with this one, y'all can swap out days, you know? But we give them the benefit, we kind of leverage the place, cause we say, every week, we give you big boxes of food. So, you know, really, you know, you know, let's, let's balance it out. Because when we get distributions coming in, such as on next week, we'll have distribution, we call out our parents and just tell them, you know, come, get food, get, get fruit, fruits and vegetables, get meat, get cereal. Sometimes, we just get cereal just for our kids. You know, cereal and milk, and cheese, and eggs, and bread, and all that such. So, transportation is kind of a big issue for them getting back home. During the school year, we did have a, um, situation that the school bus would not bring any of the kids, because they had to go through some regulations. So we spent two weeks transporting them back and forth, through utilizing our van. But that was only temporary. It was a temporary thing, it was something that we can't do all the time.
So you say you have, what, two and a half, four times that, two? Well, you wanna?
I'm one, she's the half.
Oh, you still, you have, what do I, you say?
Her name is LaShonda Bryant.
Oh, yeah, okay, I know.
She's been with them for about, with twenty-something years.
So, in my opinion, transportation, you probably could get more kids if you have adequate transportation.
Absolutely.
And that'll work better for you all. Cause you say you work, you take care of the, um, um.
Underprivileged.
Yeah, children. So, if we know that we have a lot of them out there that do not have transportation, then we need to work to try and get some transportation, so that you could get these kids to you all.
I've, I've spoken to, just, I've did some scavenging of land, I've only been here four years. Um, I'm originally, I, I've lived in Georgia for almost twenty-six years, so I've only been here four years. But I've utilized my time to be here to kind of scavenge the land, and I've used, I walked in, um, the community next door, right down the street, I walked in the community downtown. A lot of the parents are saying the same thing, they don't have transportation. The kids can come on the bus, but they can't get them back home. And they, their kids need the assistance, they need the help. They need a safe environment, a secure environment, and an environment that's gonna take care of them.
This is not something the planning commission can, I guess, really help with, but I'm just curious. What would it take, what do y'all need in order to be able to provide that transportation? Obviously, probably funding and?
Funding, funding, funding. One of the things that I've tried to leverage is funding to, to be able to accommodate, um, transportation. I've spoken to, uh, one of the foundations, which is a neighbor in, in Augusta. I've been dealing with them about establishing a communication line that we can get annual funding from them through masters to assist our kids, because we are a deprived community, um, in terms of, you know, with our students. So, I've been kind of one-on-one, working with them, trying to do that, so that we can get, um, the funds to be able to accommodate the worker, the person who's gonna drive, the insurance, the upkeep of the vehicles. Um, the vehicles that we do have, they were donated to us, so therefore, you know, we're able to, we didn't have to purchase them, but we, we got them through donation and grant money.
Have that, uh, that pipe been perked? Y'all check your perked out with D-Hex, is it a perp?
Yes, sir.
I know, uh, it used to kind of, okay.
The first, the first time.
Oh, it did? That's amazing.
If you all want to experience some of the things that we do, come out Monday at eight-thirty. Women in Unity.
Cars are normally all the way on twenty-three, for three and a half hours.
Or then when you're giving out food?
Yes.
So that's a cooler, that look cooler box out there, that's your, that's a cooler box out there.
Yes, that has fresh fruits and vegetables. Um, we, we receive that through a request. Um, they came down to visit, and while they were visiting, they said, there is no way possible y'all can do this without some assistance. So they gave us that cooler, that cooler is almost twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, no, yeah. And, and the third, those third buildings, so you're able to eliminate all that?
All that, get rid of that, cause they got food in it. They got, they got cool, they got freezers in it. They are, we have, we have a total of six in the building, upright, six in inside building, which took away some of our childcare space. Um, but we needed it, so we just kind of eliminated one area of the building. One of our classrooms got taken away because of preparation, because we literally prepare the box of food for the people. They just, we handed in the box, they get, um, I mean, we could have brought one. Um, normally, it's like forty pounds of food in a box, less than the frozen food we put in a separate box, which is all the frozen, the bakery, fresh, that can range up to about forty-five pounds as well. So they walk away most of the time with a hundred pounds of food free.
Wow.
And during the pandemic, we went from fifty to five-hundred overnight.
And it costs a little bit.
I think it's a wonderful thing, what you're doing, I mean.
You're not, you're not, you're not one thing wrong.
What?
The name.
No, that's fine.
The name.
Well, the name will eventually change.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, I, I mean, that came, that came, that came up to me as something I, I threw, you know?
Well, the name is Women in Unity.
I don't have no problem, but we know, we know where it started, I know where it started, and all, we were just wondering, whether it gonna be a name change, somewhere down the line, or you gotta go through, cause you are a nonprofit organization.
That's correct.
You got a state charter with the Secretary of State.
Yes.
So I was just wondering what it gonna be, I mean, I got no problem with it, but we just, it came of a question in the meeting that I was in about, why they hadn't changed the name?
The name will not.
Cause it, it came out for, end up for a betterment of the community, from where it started to where you are now. And it came a long way, and I want to commend you on that.
Thank you, thank you. The name will not change, per se.
Right.
It will, it will become an enhancement to the name. We've decided through our board meeting that we was gonna change, the, the name will be viewed greater WIU Impact Center. So we will be known as the Impact Center, WIU Impact Center, because of the fact that most people, when they see the name, they kind of stray away, because they think it's just women, and especially when you got a man standing in front, it don't seem to be right. But, nonetheless, I can handle, you know, um, I have handled it. So, uh, but, the name is going to hence go to WIU Impact Center. So, and we don't have to go through, we just add an additional to it, because of the work that we do. We not only do childcare, we not only do state resources, and I only do food pantry, but we also do technical service, cause we have a lot of seniors who show up, who just won't help with trying to do their benefits. That was one of the, part of our strategic plan, that we, we serve them with some benefits. We show them how to go in the computer, to try to do their social security, their food stamps, or whatever they have, because, you know, we bring those resources. We do, um, healthcare, um, every third Monday, we offer healthcare, whether you can come and get, um, get their blood pressure, and their sugars, um, checks, and all that stuff, diabetes. So, there's a lot of other services that come along with this little umbrella that we've been operating on. That's the reason why we changed the name to Impact Center, because we impact the community.
Do you work with the fatherhood project at all?
No, ma'am. I got two of my own.
Enough of the project.
It's a, it's an awesome thing, but.
How does it?
Tell me what it consists of, they make that incorporated.
Men, uh, they usually work through DSS, that's why I asked, cause you mentioned DSS. They work to have men who are fathers, and who have been through, you know, having a child and all like that. And what they do is they take young men, usually from high school, who, or even younger. I, I've seen them where DSS refers them to them. But, they help the young men get a clear path, how to deal with becoming a father, because that's mainly what they focus on. But, everything you're doing kind of falls in line with what they do, you know, at some point, so.
The only, only thing about, um, and this is one of the things that we spoke to DSS about, you know, even when we considering volunteers, it's a, there is some, some red tape. Um, because we have to have, like, our six volunteers, they've been, the entire summer, they've been getting certified. They have to go through certification, background report, they have to go through health inspection, they have to do all of those things. They have to do a fifteen-hour course certified by the state, in order for them to even be around the kids, even if they're just maintenance persons. So, when we, and we have to have, uh, you know, they have to have CPR, first aid, just in case of an emergency. So, when we, when we start doing volunteers to be around our kids, we have to reconsider, because there's some criteria we follow, um, through ABC quality, and as well as DSS, Department of Social Service.
And no comments concerned?
Do y'all have any questions about the facility itself?
Well, basically.
Any other questions that we can't, I don't know what to answer?
Wait, come on up there, Tori, come on, can I see what you got to say today? You gonna be, you gonna be the contractor, you gonna do it for half profit too, right? You don't need to make no profit off of different. You gonna be on the slab?
Yes.
Okay, on the slab, right? You know, I know, uh, let me see, uh, ladies, I just looking at the rough, yeah, I think I had seen a larger plan of this thing somewhere.
We just like set up right now.
Y'all just in the primary, uh?
Right, we had a point out where we've submitted everything to, um, extra to the planning. So, so we have, you know, the complete package, you know, minus anything that we may have to add to it. The site itself, we're gonna try to do, from a site perspective, try to do a balanced site, not bring in too much dirt, cause there is a slight elevation from the back of the property going towards Crest Road, and that's the orientation of the building as well. So we're gonna try to just keep a, this, a balanced site, so we don't do as much grading. Other than that, it's gonna be pretty straightforward, yeah.
What's the square footage of the building?
I wanna say it's over nine and less than ten, ninety-three, ninety-five, I can't remember the exact number. So, just, just over nine thousand square feet.
It's gonna have a full kitchen?
And just FYI, um, building-wise, they're good to go. I have the full set of architectural, everything's been submitted. This is the last, um, hurdle before they can actually start the construction process.
By the way, they to the point where you can almost read the start, and except for?
Yes, I, I have all of the documents for the actual building construction. Um, Tori, obviously, is a qualified general contractor, so there's nothing holding them up other than getting through planning commission's approval process, and then they're done.
Did y'all have to meet any type of state or federal regulations because of, you know, who you're serving for that building? So, I, I'm, I'm thinking the feds and the state would step in and say, if you're gonna serve, you know, a nonprofit and serve your community this way, they probably have minimum requirements for that? So you, you've already gone through all that, met all that?
The, um, the plans on the building accommodates what the state requires for serving children.
Okay.
That was our bottom line, the kids that we serve. You know, the handicap accessibility comes with that as well, so we met that.
The zoning that says general residential, that fits a residential type of?
Yes, so this, uh, the zoning there, um, and actually, that's one of the reasons they chose to build on the county side. Um, the, the town side is actually more restrictive, and they would have to go through a PUD-type process, or, or request some sort of zoning change to get it on the town side. But since the majority of the property is in the county, ours allows any sort of nonprofit, community-oriented, um, type businesses to be in general residential. Um, it does not, i- if it were a for-profit organization, the conversation would be different. But, being a nonprofit community organization, they, they meet our zoning requirements.
Well, that Dominion, the S C and U, I mean, uh, R E A, which one is it? Aiken, uh, the LECO, that Aiken, uh, Dominion?
I believe it's Dominion.
It's all Dominion.
Dominion, okay, I know what it is, huh? I don't have any, anybody have anything else further?
No.
Not? We appreciate it, you know, sit down.
Thank you.
I check, make sure your license up today then. Okay, now we go to our, let's bag up and go to, uh, other business at hand, which is our reviewing of the comp plan change and so forth. Uh, you got it, you got the flow.
Okay, so, obviously, y'all are already familiar with the text changes that we've made. And since we have two new members, I'm going to have her resend the packet of everything that they've already approved, just so that y'all can read that before the next meeting. They've already been voted on, so there's not really anything to vote on there. But, you know, just as a FYI for your perusal, I'll have her resend that. Um, obviously, in the last meeting, uh, that's the zoning map, we discussed, uh, the comp plan. Um, I made very, very, very few changes. See up there, this is the comprehensive plan changes. I simply changed this section right here, the very first lots, I changed to, um, neighborhood commercial instead of suburban residential. I was going to continue that up all the way to the industrial park, but these lots right here, these, um, agri-industry lots, and these two suburban density lots, I chose not to change them, because they're so big, I don't want to take the density restrictions off those lots. Um, those lots are enormous, so I didn't think it would be a safe idea to remove the density restrictions there. I did change this lot, um, to light industry office distribution, simply because it matches these other, other lots right here. These I left because of the size, um, but then I changed all of those. Um, other than that, all I did was change the density around the town. And it will load eventually. Alright, so, all of this was suburban, now it's village, and that was, that's all I changed. So, basically, just the allowable density right around the town limits went up. Um, it's still residential, I didn't change it to commercial or industrial or anything like that. I just changed the residential design. I just changed the residential designation. Some of it was already like this, um, if you want, I can pull up the old one. To our internet provider. All right, well, while that loads, I'm gonna go over to the zoning map. There were only two things that y'all mentioned y'all want changed. Lisa, you wanted to, uh, fill in that gap with RR, so I did that. And then all of this gray that you see, that is the new RA zoning. So, I basically filled in all of the, uh, Merryweather, unzoned areas of Merryweather with RA.
Why, why did it go beyond Garrett? The original plan was Garrett.
So, it's only up to?
It goes all the way to the Red Oak Grove Road and around twenty-three, all the way out to the county line, almost.
Okay, so I have it stopping at Georgia Road. And the reason I did that, if this would load, is the estate residential stops right there. So, I kind of copied where the estate residential was on our comp plan.
So, is it just stopping on Georgia Road?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'd like to be able to show you that, but.
Because I know when we was in here, you drew it all the way to past Red Oak Grove.
Right, well, I wanted to, uh, hit, so, the estate residential comp plan area, specifically, our, um, it shows the two acre minimum lot size, basically, in the average density for that area. So, I thought that was the best match for the new zoning, since it has a two acre lot size requirement. And I just basically blanked it, that whole part of the comp plan area with that zoning. There are some things that will change, minor stuff, um, like, uh, obviously, this is where the rock quarry is, is going, they're on, they're not using seventeen hundred acres, so the majority of that, this zoning will apply. But whatever that they utilize, they're already approved. If they get approval from the state, then it would change to whatever's appropriate for their use. But other than that, uh, there's some TCU type things that will, I'll go in there and edit. That's like, uh, pump stations, sewer pump stations, water, uh, municipal water supply stuff. Anything that would be government related, I would change to TCU, or just unzone it. For the overwhelming majority, this is what it would look like.
From Georgia Road to where? What's the outskirts?
So, if you look here, this is Georgia Road. Here's Garrett, it comes down Garrett onto Martin Town, and it goes up to High Point.
Yep.
Uh, it covers Republican, Mill Creek, and then every, everything's, basically, everything south of Horn Creek.
Horn Creek, okay.
Um, Doc, I can't tell from here or on this map, um, if you went back east towards Sweetwater Road, and can you go up Sweetwater Road and show me where those boundaries are?
So, this is Mount Vintage, and that's where it stops, is that Mount Vintage? Because that's where the estate residential, that's right at the corner of, comp plan stops.
Okay, and then what roads are between Chevis Creek and Dry Branch? What is that area?
That should be back toward, towards Sweetwater, towards Horns Creek.
Yeah, these are, um, these are the nearest subdivisions. Uh, this is just open, open land, this isn't actually a road, I don't even know why it's drawn into GIS, but, um, Donnie Thompson owns this. And Charles Blackston owns that. And then, of course, this is a Republican here. And then, all of this would be zoned, this is Chevis Creek Wilderness Trail, Moore Road, all that. Uh, this is Indian Ridge, Sylvan, uh, this is Tavern Hill right here. And then, of course, all this is already zoned, so we, we would not be affecting any of that, we're not changing any of that, this, this would be the change here, so all of Briggs, all of Moore.
Slow down, the, the green across from Tavern Hill, you said's already zoned?
Yes, that's already zoned RR.
I don't remember seeing that on any of the zoning maps, that it was already zoned.
But this, this is showing the existing, so. Yeah, so turn the proposed off, and, yeah, that's the, this is the current right there, so it's already RR.
And we're hoping that this will protect citizens, you know, it's what we're actually doing this for. Is that correct?
So, RA is basically a residential zoning. It does have a large lot requirement, but that's what was specifically asked for. Um, that's two acre lot size requirement, um, for residential. Uh, it does not allow any industry.
What is that, what is it outside of it? And just a rural, what is a rural?
So, it allows all agricultural and residential uses, basically.
Was there a minimum on lots on rural, is it one acre in rural, or is it two acre?
So, well, for most of this area, for residential, um, this zoning won't have much of an impact, because it's all septic tanks out there anyway. And in Edgefield County, if you're got a well and a septic tank, you're already required to have the two acres.
Okay.
And that, that applies unzoned, zoned.
Yeah, it don't matter.
Whatever. The biggest thing that this will do is put use restrictions on the property in terms of commercial and industrial type uses. The, the future of this area getting water and sewer is not in the near future, I'll put it that way. I'll never say never, but.
Well, I had asked about, you know, going up Sweetwater Road to Ransford Road. Is, the reason you stopped is because of Mount Vintage?
Well, the reason I stopped is because that's where the, uh, comp plan stopped. So, if you look here, this is estate residential, and as you see, it stops exactly where I stopped the zoning. I basically just followed this estate residential comp plan map, and that's what I zoned RR, rural agriculture. I tried to match them exactly.
Are you wanting to expand the comp plan, to go past there and then expand the RA zoning? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, uh, I mean, because I've already talked to some people that live off Ransford. They're interested in that type of zoning up there. I have talked to people that live off Sylvan and Sweetwater, that are interested in being zoned, the new RA.
So, I can, we can, obviously, we can accommodate that. Primarily, we would need to change, um, our comp plan first.
Okay.
To make sure that it would match whatever we want to zone RA further. The zoning, of course, we're gonna break it down into five hundred lots at a time, so y'all are gonna see twenty or thirty mea- uh, meetings of zoning recommendations to council. There's no way to do it in a lump sum if council wants us to send letters to everybody that's gonna get a zoning change. So, we have to kind of do it in bite-sized pieces to do large areas. So, we can always start, um, you know, over here and over here, and then start making changes as we, as we go up over a longer period. Now, if council decides that they don't want us to send letters out to everybody that's getting a zoning change, then we could do a couple thousand parcels at one time, but historically speaking, they have wanted the letters to go out, so I'm gonna assume that that's what they'll want.
And to change the comp plan, comp plan, so we can vote on it next month, is that, where would you want to extend it to?
Yes, and, and I can do that on this map right now.
So, we can have that ready, and we can, y'all can, say, we, y'all can vote on that next month. For that, if he can add that and have that in the presentation in your map, so you can look at it, and if everybody's okay with it, then y'all can vote on it.
You said Ransford, so you want me to take it up to Ransford Van?
Yeah, because I, I've already had some people that live on Ransford ask me about it, and they said they would be interested in that, to protect development around them that far up Sweetwater Road. And I'm, I'm assuming the Sweetwater Road Sylvan area would be covered also? If you go up that far?
Yeah, Sylvan's already covered.
It's already covered, okay.
Wow, there's a couple of big ones in there.
One of them big one should be the sheriff, you better make sure you, sheriff's always with it. I said, one of them big ones is the sheriff, you better make sure. You don't want sheriff on the wrong side.
Yeah, he live right here.
And the reason you're leaving off the other side of Sweetwater Road is because who the property owners are?
No, I, I'd, like I said, I just followed the estate residential, that's, that's all I did. I didn't leave, I, I literally followed the comp plan line, I didn't leave anything one way or the other. All right, so that pretty much covers Ransford Road.
And the dark green, that's National Forest?
Yeah, that's, that's federal property, we can't really do anything with that.
I would think we'd want to protect development around the National Forest, so if we went, continued going west, uh, to the National Forest line.
By doing this, does it change any shooting range? Or anything?
Um, well, not residential, anyway. If you wanted to build a commercial one, yeah.
That's what I meant, like residential shooting stuff.
But no, we don't, we don't, uh, accessory uses are not affected by this type of zoning. All right, that's what that would look like. Clean that up a little bit.
Dustin, were there any other areas on your side of the county over there that, have you heard from any people over there? Does that cover the areas that your people want?
Most of them don't want it. They're old timers.
Sorry, this thing is so slow, I don't know why the internet's being so pitiful today.
It is. Say, they had it beforehand. I bet they wish they had it beforehand.
But I think it hits the hotspots. Theoretically, it will load eventually. I say that.
So, with that update to the comp plan, then we would start going back and utilizing that RA?
Well, obviously, with the zoning, um, that's gonna be, there's gonna be public hearings, uh, there, there, that's a involved process, that's not a, I'm clicking a few buttons and it happens kind of thing. The comp plan's not regulatory, it's, it's a guide, so we can kind of make whatever recommended changes we want, and as long as county council agrees, it's done, it, it's an internal document. Zoning, of course, affects people's lives, so there's a much heftier process to that.
Right, but you, I guess, what, what you would do is prioritize what you think would be, the RA would benefit and protect most, and what you would like to see implemented first. Those could be your first recommendations. So, y'all start thinking about what y'all want to recommend.
And just so you know, at the next meeting, that will be the last time you discuss it. There will be a public hearing, and you will vote on the comp plan items. And then, I'm going to put one large package together and send every comp plan change to county council for them to do in a single run. So, they won't get pieces like y'all got, they will get a full comp plan update to vote on. They'll have their three readings, and the comp plan will be changed. The zoning, we can do however y'all want to, or however they want to, so you can talk to your councilman. Like I said, typically, historically, they've wanted to do it in bites, so that they can hold public meetings, and they can get, you know, letters out to people, those sorts of things, so that there's enough public input. Technically, with a comp plan change, you don't have to do that, the, the law does not require it, but the planning commit, as y'all know, zoning is, is quite the topic for Edgefield, so. if, if you just shadow zone an entire area, that would be politically inconvenient.
He may wanna talk to your councilperson. And just have that communication and say, here, this is what I'm thinking, and get feedback from them as well.
So, I'm not saying there's any kind of limit on what y'all can recommend for zoning, y'all can recommend as much of the map be zoned as you want, just understand that it's probably gonna be broken down into bite-sized pieces. So, be most aware of what areas you wanna focus on first and we'll eventually get the full map done. But have your critical areas planned out. So, is everybody happy with just this little edit? Do you want me to leave this edit on there, make additional changes, etc.? Because if this is it, I will have Keisha print this and this is what y'all will be voting on at the next meeting. I know it looks pitiful 'cause the computer won't load it, but it goes all the way to the county line. Yep, basically Garrett, Garrett Road, all the way down to, I guess this is Perry Town.
Any more comment, question?
Alright. And obviously, the other items on here, we are, we've already discussed the overlay districts to death, y'all know where we extended those. We've already voted on that, we've already talked about it, we are going to do a little bit of an extension on 25, but other than that, they are what they are. Looks like that's it.
Okay, that's it.
Garrett, is it all west of Garrett or north of it, well, east of it?
Uh, that would be east. So, Lentz Lane, Georgia, Penny, Basswood. It stops at Georgia, so McCain Lane and Georgia Road is where it stops.
Where Georgia comes in, back?
Yep, back toward Martin Town.
Alright, with that then, you, then if we are, a young hour, wait session, take about five minutes, right, by that time, y'all reckon be young. At this time, we were called to order planning commission in Edgefield County for July 11, 2024. Have any, any location I do it in that. Father God, we thank you for once again allowing us to send me here at this familiar spot that we do month, and we thank you for the unity that exists for us, and thank you, Father, for the desire to serve this county and the people of this county best to our ability in a fair manner. We thank you for being here and for bringing us through the ups and downs of life, thank you for the strength spiritually as Philas guides and keepers, Father, that we make prime decisions and make good decisions in good faith. In Jesus' name, we pray, amen. Stand for, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which we stand, one nation, under God, in the middle of liberty and justice for all. At this time, I need an approver for our agenda for tonight that is standing before you.
Second.
Motion and second approval of this agenda, right hand, poses, eyes have it. Approval for the minutes of January, I mean June 13th work session meeting.
Second.
All in favor, right hand, poses, eyes have it. I need approval for the June 13 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor, right hand, motion and approval for the minutes. Guest speakers, any guest speakers? Report from the staff regarding our June land development application and the plat review approval, what you have on hand?
Our exempt subdivisions for the month of June were two. Minor subdivisions that were approved were six and plat reviews were five.
We didn't get the written report last month after the meeting, and do you have a written one this month?
I can email you that one, I can give you the you want the full with the parcel numbers and everything?
It just helps if someone asks a question that we have that information.
And I have, if you want the parcel numbers for this, I can make you guys a copy before you leave.
Okay.
I have, I just give you a quick rundown for the number that we had for last month, but I can give you, uh, I can start putting it in your packets with, with the parcel numbers and the date that it was done.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, well on that, sorry. Report, I mean, a private hearing at this time. A private hearing regarding the land development application for proposed women in unity facility located at the corner of Crest Road and Railroad. Tax map ID 137, that's double off, that's double off, that's 021, that's triple off. And we are on the floor for a private hearing, anyone having comments or that have signed up for it, anyone sign up to speak of anything, so come forward, you know, we ask that you, uh,
My name is Pam Avrat. Started attending your meetings and have had a big education. I appreciate the chance to speak, but I also realize by attending your meetings, the limitations that you all have and the legal foundation that you cannot stand on. And I would strongly encourage you to please take Doc's recommendations for the zoning and create the edge field that we want to live in, something controlled and not a hodgepodge of some industry here, some industry there. I talked to Dustin, I needed him to add us into this loop, and I appreciate you all listening because we live on Red Oak Grove Road, if you have, we have semis coming down that road and it's kinda like Woodlawn, but worse in a sense that, and we have tractors, we have farmland out there and you have semis and farmland. There's no room to move off of those areas, so, um, please, I want you to know, I want you to have the power to make good decisions for Edgefield. So, I strongly give you my support. It makes me very uncomfortable to know that you have to send out all those letters and if I can do anything as far as, I will talk to my commissioner. We are a democracy, but we've chosen you all to lead us and the commissioners have trusted you to plan. And now you need the authority to make those plans legal, you need to be able to say yes or no, this isn't appropriate. So, I just wanted you to know. I appreciate your service, I want to give you some sort of legal foundation and I would strongly encourage you to to pass this zoning effort. And I will definitely reach out to the commissioner and say, please, you, they all got re-elected, so we don't have to worry about that for a little while and that they make good decisions for Edgefield. Growth is going to come and how you all control it, you gotta have the ability to control it, so, thank you.
Anyone else on this? No? Anyone with a speak on the, concerning the, uh, women in unity facility? Any comments, any questions? Nope. Not, a closed-out public hearing, we go on to old business which is non. We get on to a new business, we do our final discussions, make a vote regarding the proposed women in unity facility. So, this discussion among the members up here. According to what I have and searching, what we done, I think it's gonna be a good access in favor of helping people in the county. You know, and not, and not, sometimes it really, but this is a necessity to me, it seem like, you know. And I know it came, they started up from nothing. I thought she started up from, I thought she was crazy when she bought this town, at one time. But she, she hung in there and it, and it really came up to something that really end up real big and good for the community, you know. I watched it, I went over and looked, a few days ago and checked, they got a van and a truck that they live in Berlin with a vehicle, that's good progress. But I think in the location, I've been wondering what would happen in that location they've been working on lately and so forth, but they meet, what, you know, in the middle of the zoning that district. The middle lot, they got eight acres, that's no problem. You know, they complete their process, we heard applications and all, you know. They got a comp plan. They got a pending on D H, Donwater, D H wastewater. And I think their, you got waiting on your, if it kinda tap, they got water there, electric's not gonna be a problem. You know, that DOT is pending and traffic gonna be a minimal on that. It's not gonna be a big deal, I don't think, but I, I've talked to some gentleman yesterday. They were concerned about the traffic and I had a long discussion with him, you know. I don't know, I really, once I finished with the conversation, everything was well, 'cause he had seen the sign out and he worried about what was going on. But I think it may not require missing so forth, and right now, comment from the other commissioner?
I just think it's a worthwhile organization and I commend you for the work you do to help the citizens here who are less fortunate. You know, we showed, I remember a mustard seed of faith and that must be what you started with and to grow it and what you have, I'm just amazed and I'm thankful for people that take that initiative, so thank you.
That being said, what's, I, I recommend that we, a motion to approve it. At the point that they are.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Second.
Second. It's on the preliminary, right? The, what we voting on, the, uh, pre-pre-preminary plan. All in favor, say a motion of granting them approval on this, raise your right hand, poses, eyes have it. So, between you and the building department at this time. Okay, bring in all the business we have. Don't have any comments. Okay, granted all the business we have, don't have any comments. I think we can, give them, don't wanna give me a motion to adjourn? All in favor of adjourn, then raise your right hand, meet the adjourn.